To uh cover our payroll. I just come back.
No, you stay. So, I'm trying to look at this here. What's that part of the top say, six hundred ninety-five thousand? Is it the highway? What was it? It said to the right?
County highway.
Yeah, it says county highway. That's their reimbursement for taxes.
I guess I know what I'm looking at.
Well, this is how much uh let's see, how much we have, how much our expenses were. The seven twenty-one, how much we pay, our expenses were seven nineteen, so it gets us down to twenty-three hundred and seventy-two dollars after payroll. That's what county general's balance will be.
Twenty-two hundred, twenty-two thousand, the county highways putting back into. And you said you need Larry Grace as a reimbursement, is what you said?
Not Larry, Glasgow's reimbursement. Larry Grace, I think, does have some fees, he said.
Oh, well, I mean, glass was good about dropping it off.
Yeah, I'll have to get that to the bank ASAP.
Balance last week was what, seventy-nine thousand or something?
Hundred seventy-nine, wasn't it?
Nah, it was that much.
I don't recall since I was, should I have brought that in?
And do you usually get some money from the state the first couple of weeks of the month?
I'm sure that um they in March will be getting from them now.
Sure, Sheriff can maybe call them, of course, that's just like everybody else trying to get them to send it, you know. Well, I understand that they've always waited to send everybody's out at the same time or something like that.
Didn't Cheryl, did Cheryl call about that last week? Was it, I was gone on Tuesday and Cheryl came in. I thought when I got back, she said that she had called how much the state had owed.
That was, I think, a week before.
Was it the week before?
Okay. Well, we'll tell him Larry to come down there and see you when he needs.
Well, book it to the bank. Is there anything else you need?
Uh, just trying to work hard to get some money.
I'll have it today, you're welcome.
This is the mountain, Jackson. Eighty-two and one fifty-seven.
Did you get Larry and Kim straightened out this morning?
Yes. Tried to. Where were you at? You didn't come get a cup of coffee. Daryl came got a cup of coffee.
I got slammed with recording yesterday and then my applications to vote person called and I spent a half hour with Kim. Then a girl named Brooke, Brooke Lurvy from E S and S called and said I need to get my ballots ordered, so I was trying to catch up on the recording. And I didn't get caught up, so I finished it up this morning. Hopefully I'll get my ballots ordered today and stay out of hot water.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. This, I mean, this, this election, we won't have, we won't have ten to fifteen percent turnout. And it's actually the most complicated last election. Because there's precinct, one precinct has four different ballot styles that you gotta keep up with them. And most of them had two and three. And where you live, when you go to vote, the ballot style you'll receive. There's no contested races on the ballot. You, you'll be voting for school board and regional board of school trustees and there's no contested races. But you better show up and vote.
Well, I, I voted here.
I'm talking about in April coming up.
Oh, we can't vote in here in April?
Yeah.
I want you to come up here and vote.
When I get ballots.
I don't even know where my ballot place is.
But we have four precincts.
First be the, I think about a high school or?
Yeah. But we have four precincts. That don't have a contested race. But us still gotta set them up.
No one contests, don't you think?
Well, I mean, nobody just wants to, evidently, they're either satisfied, nobody wants to run for the position. Of course, regional board of school trustees, that's, they're gonna be doing away with that anyway, I guess, eventually.
Skyler doing good?
Yeah, spring ankles healing and.
Listen, yeah, sign that in. I don't know if you ever have enough.
Got a place for it, but. Ankles getting better, so?
Yeah. I'm starting to take some golf lessons now. I'm trying to get ready for golf season.
Staying busy, aren't you?
Yeah.
Where's he take lessons at? But they could.
Oh, that Steely, Jason Steely, he's a, he's a country club. That's where he works in, he's pretty good.
He had a lot of kids playing on the golf team.
Well, you know, Drake Snapper's moving to Oracle and golf.
Yeah, I heard that. I wonder why, it just says golf or?
He thinks he can get more noticed.
Oh, yeah?
That means Kyle's gonna step up and really step up.
Isn't, is her, isn't Candy, is she moving over there?
No, but uh Candy's long, goes over there. Okay.
All right, we'll see you.
Thank you, boy. Is everything all right? Uh, other guy I talked to been fifty days ago and he said there was no stop sign on fourth circle when you hit a bell, Greg. On either, either entrance.
May not be. I thought there was.
Well, I thought there was. Should there be one there?
By law, it's a stop because it's a T intersection. But I thought there, I could check it.
Yeah, stop anyway there, it's supposed to.
By law, you've got to stop anyway. Yes, a lot of people don't realize that.
Well, he said they was all running it, uh, and he said that there'd be people coming down. They were grabbing, sometimes had to stop pretty quick because. And I don't know if it stops, I wouldn't help the situation, you know, if they're running down.
Uh, some people may not be aware, but yes, any T intersection, by law, absent any other traffic control, is a stop.
The one entering the T is stopped.
If you're coming into the T, you've got to stop.
Okay.
And I tell you what, I just learned that a few years ago myself, so it's nothing, it's nothing, you know. Uh, but we can look, I thought we had stop signs on those, but I'll have to ask and have to look.
I thought, well, if it was darn near and you know, of course, he lives there, you would think he would know.
We'll look.
And I don't know whether they need one, you know, just, I don't know what the, how that works. Traffic counter, how they work that?
Need. Yeah, it, it, it's, it's based, based beyond a, a kind of a judgment call and a need.
Yeah.
I tried to cover that up and I didn't make it. That is aggravating the rain, is it raining? Spraining. Yeah, you know. How aggravating glasses are until you have to have them.
Well, that, the rain is the most aggravating part.
That is, yeah. Sitting here like this, well, you think I wear that hat most of the time, but I didn't wanna wear it in here and have the hand, but. So I threw it in the truck and that's, that's my umbrella most of the time and, and the biggest thing is keep my glasses from getting water all over them.
Uh, Larry over there on Mount Mission, uh, that looks good. They've done a real good job over there. Did somebody complain about that or just decided to? Yeah, it needed to be done.
Well, somebody did walk back, if I remember.
Yeah, the guy complained about the woods down there, but I didn't think about the other side, but there was some bigger trees there, wasn't there?
Yeah. I, I just didn't, it was just kinda growing in on us and uh.
Well, I'm sure.
So uh. I had noticed it be, just a week or two before you said something, and so we went down and, you know, and kinda trimmed some of those that was coming out on the west side and did some on the east side, but.
Looks good.
They talked to the farmer and the landowner on that west side and that's, it's done and now. It's out of our hair for a long time, if we stamp it down. Well, there on that road bank, we'll mow it now.
Yeah.
Cause we ain't got trees on it, so we can mow it and, and that'll keep it down, so.
Well, something like that, it just keeps getting worse, you know.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think they were gonna do some, a little bit more on the west side, get some of that.
Yeah.
But I ain't been back over there for a couple of days.
Mount further than that, there's a bunch of stuff too.
Good, I know it needed it.
I've been expecting a phone call to make that. Got you. On the other end, out there by State Ridge. Uh, yeah. The goose lady we called, they liked their trees and we've been keeping rid of some on the. On the roadside of the ditch, they were growing up and we've got rid of some there. Because they were literally getting out into the.
Where it meets at Mount Mission, the.
Their state ridge coming back this way on Mount Mission.
Well, you know, you can't replace it, that state ridge coming up there.
You can now. And I've been, like I said, since last. We started Friday, I've been expect, I've, I've been expecting a phone call, but. Oh, well, that's just one of those things.
Hang on, good?
Yeah. Of course, I know.
I think we're gonna make a, a worse one, wait till next week before we make a decision that, who to send to testing, right, Doc, cause Jeff's not here as well.
Well, you know, I, all I'm saying is, I've got the computer. You can do it if you want me to leave this one with you. But need to submit it on their resolution, it'd be less hassle.
It's bringing it next week.
Yeah. And whatever, you know, whatever you decide. You can pass the resolution and then I can go back and type it up and bring it back in, John, and sign and seal it. That way we send a nice type copy and. Uh, you had asked me to uh. You know, thing along whether you want to do buy another vehicle or not, since the one I was driving kinda went belly up. I did talk to the closest four dealer, which is Harper and Viana, they cannot sell on that contract. So he said, we can bid and be competitive and he has been, he gave me a horizon, he is competitive. But I think if we do that, we probably need to put it out for bids. And if you wanna do that, just, you know, let's, I can start putting that together and we can do that.
How, how close is he gonna be, you think, to the, the, the contractual price?
He's gonna pay five hundred dollars.
Well, I think we should try to put the bid out, wouldn't you?
Yeah. Well, will they let you buy from him, Larry? If he's a little higher, will it, uh, set his floor?
That's, well, that's up to the board.
Yeah.
I mean, the state, they don't have anything to say about it?
Well, we, we write the, it's been a while since I've done this, but we always write the specs so that we can, technicalities. Uh, the other thing you can do, uh, take into consideration. The cost.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what I'm looking at. There ain't that much difference when you take into consideration of the cost of.
Your.
People going after it and so on and so forth, you know.
And that's an exact comparable vehicle?
Uh, yeah, I tried to, I shared with him the way they had bid theirs. And the, the specs and of course, being a board dealer, they can do the same thing and of course, if we bid it, we'll have to write some specs. You cannot, I don't think you wanna write the spec strictly so that it has to be for it.
Right.
You know, we, we've got two dealers here in town that I think we need to write to, I'll have to come up with some sort of specs here. That they can bid a comparable product in a different branding. And I'll, I'll start putting that together. And we'll try to get that done, if, if that's what you're wanting. And hey, just because we do bids, doesn't mean you have to accept any of them.
I really like this sound local, we could.
I agree.
Yep.
I really do, that's why I said. See, if he could have bid on the same contract, the bidding process has already been done there, so that would be illegal. He says, no, I can't sell on that contract.
Okay.
And I, I, I got something about a week, man, if he can't sell on that contract, we really need to bid it, either buy on the state contract or it has been bid, or bid it ourselves.
Right.
Like I said, we got by with it once before, but we were told they were using, it was a different dealer and they were using that contract on a piece of machinery. And they were using actually the state bid contract. If you're not using state bid contract, I, I think that throws a different light into it.
Uh, Larry, what's he buying from Hope Rescent? Beans?
Stainless steel tank.
Oh, that, he had the tank?
Okay. I think that's really gonna.
Yeah.
Help us out.
Prevented maintenance later.
You know, I wouldn't be interested, except it's available here now. And you know, this. It's over eight thousand and I'm not so sure about that.
Is that big, you mean?
I'm thinking it's bigger than that, but I'll get some better measurements and do some different calculations, but.
Uh, you know how to figure those. As I say, I had the field man figure mine one time, they know how to do it, I didn't know if you knew.
Yeah, I can figure the volume on it, yeah. See, cause this has got a, it'd be some calculation, cause it's got a sphere on each end, so I'll have to.
Is it a horizontal or either way?
It's horizontal, yeah, cause it's, it's a, it's a sphere on each end. Five inches to three quarter thick.
Been there for a while.
It'd be there for a while.
Or do you have to build, so I pull some silence or handle it a bit back?
You know, we did a, kind of a brainstorming session last week after I talked to you. And, you know, we've got some guys with varied experience and what one of them said, that the place he'd worked one time that did that. They took a, like, three inch rock. And just made a bed of three inch rock and set it on that bed of rock.
Uh, my tanks that are vertical, I've got one that's, I think, eight thousand. And uh, the only thing, Larry, I, Stan did that, except it was even Stan one time. But only I, you know, if you have a leak, you, you may not save the ball. And I put mine on just some cross ties and they're sitting up there, you know, about eight inches.
Well, yeah, but. We will put it, we'll have to put a fitting in the bottom, or we want to put a fitting in the bottom. We wouldn't have to. This is fixed up to suck from the top. Right now. But I just, eh, you know, that's, if you don't have it primed good, then you got trouble. So uh, uh, we're gonna put a fitting on the bottom and we will leave it exposed, but other than that, I can't see.
Well, yeah, in your situation, like stainless steel.
Stainless steel, I can't see that too much, but yeah, you're right. But that's what we thought, hey, we're just. And their thought is, uh, they were using very cor, it was a, an ag supply somewhere. And they were using very corrosive fertilizers.
Yeah.
And said that's why they did it and says, then if they ever decided to move it. Shoot, you just move it to another rock pile. So we like that idea and it's cheap and easy.
Yeah, and it's not like, you know, field versus, you know, water and salt.
Yeah.
What answer, air, is it heat or air, that stuff out there?
Oh, uh, that was our asphalt heater. And we haven't had too much trouble with it and we called the, the local gas company and said, who would you recommend? And they said, this guy, he's the guy that does, takes care of the hospital. And I said, that sounds good to me. And so he come out. Tell you what, he wasn't there ten or fifteen minutes and he said, it's your controller. And he ordered a new controller and a couple of weeks later, he got a new controller in and they weren't there thirty minutes again and he had us back. So he really seems to know what he's doing, though.
Where's he, the front?
All the way from Wingham.
The duck.
Yeah. All the way from Wingham. In fact, I asked him, I said, do you do the courthouse? He says, no, we don't do that, but they, they do the maintenance at the hospital.
This is Dar, Darwin D M Air?
Yeah.
Darwin.
So, yeah, when he was at ours, did you do the, the one to courthouse? He says, no. I said, well, I said, Darrell Bunny with the gas companies, who I called.
Okay.
Uh, he had, uh, put us on to a guy. What happened is we worked with a fella, uh. John Myant. He worked for Chester Mechanical and they're the people that put in the gas conversion. It used to be oil fired and they put in the gas conversion. And we had it for a few years and had a problem and they called back over there and he was retired. And we didn't have too good of luck. So I called Darrell and he put, he gave us a fellow's name. And I couldn't even remember and I called him all back and I says, what was this guy's name? I can't find it. He says, well, he's had health issues, so he's quit. And so they did some checking, found this guy, said he does the hospitals. Crand, so we get him a call and. Thanks, Juanita, saw your call.
Maybe she has a problem sometime, give him a call and, you know, let these people work on it. Yeah, that'd be good. And then you'll work on that bid then?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll put spec, try to start putting specs together and, you know. Do you want me to increase my mileage?
Yeah, that would help reimburse that back. Yeah, we should.
I'll check with John, see what.
I think Quentin didn't get the sentence, what did he know?
What, what do you, cause I, I know where I work at and they reimburse fifty-seven point five. I don't know what the rule is.
I don't know, I've been doing thirty. So that if you were paying somebody else mileage, you wouldn't give in Brownston. But if you want to increase it, hey, it's, it's a matter of taking it from one account, putting it to another account, so that's all. So I'll talk with John and see what. All right, and we do that, I mean, that's just something that I do.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Larry, thank you.
I just wanna get an update on where we're at and everything and see what's going on.
On this occasion. Well, back in, uh, we had ordered two thirty-six inch doors, fifty-seven hundred dollars. For the wheelchair to get in. And other than that and the post keeps on falling down, that's what the, the historical society recommended. So they've gotta put them out. And then of course, in spring, I'm gonna bring a load of dirt and fix the yard. And then we'll be ready to start on the restroom, I guess.
Okay.
Or maybe before, I've got a gas leak to come in this weekend.
Okay, when are the doors gonna be here?
Uh, I think that here, the, the people that, um, um, and I don't know who it is. Barnhill ordered them, but I don't know who had them. Uh, they're gonna put them in. And I think they're already here.
Are they the automatic kind or?
No, I, I, what I'm gonna do, I think, since I bid only entrance, I, I think what I'd like to do back there is put a, a button out there. For the, for the person in the wheelchair and, and a sign that says that if they need assistance, push the button and ring a bell and there's something, you know.
So when they push the button, somebody will have to come open the door?
Well, the guy will be right there, the guard, you know, the security person. Uh, and, and that, that's okay with everybody. And also, Jim Walters called me about the card system. To, to get in the door down here. Now, you know, you don't swipe it now, uh, there's a, a green light or maybe a red light on the door facing. And you just take this card, just like credit card, and just put it up there to that light, if he has some down there. And, and the door will unlock.
What was the cost on something like that?
Well, the last you can, he said, the cost, now they have four entrances, I think, so probably more, but they said ten thousand dollars.
For them? Yeah, so is that what Josh Rikers had to look at?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what he had, he said that's what they use, but, so maybe for us, fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred?
Well, no, um, the, the caller, he said, was three dollars. So it's just, um.
Now, we're just doing that as a convenience for the employees, so they don't have to.
That's all, that's all. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna do it, but I just wanted to tell you, he called and I went, I mean, everybody has a key. Were we?
Not everybody, I mean, they're not supposed to.
I don't have a key.
You have a key?
Why not?
Well, we'll make you one.
You took what's your name's key?
I gave that to, back to the rightful owner.
But he only had one to the basement door, didn't he? Did he have one to the?
No, well, he gave his to, you know, he's got the key.
You're the basement, you're the basement man?
Yeah.
I'm the back door man.
Would we be better off to spend the money for that scan system instead on the handicap door where it, where it would open for those people automatically? Cause what if someone's not up there, you know? The front door, you know, the main door. What's it cost to put one of those systems on there? I didn't know.
I mean, I can check on it.
Where you push the button to that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean that.
I'd like to play with that.
It was basically, I'd say, you know, since that's only entrance, be open.
Right.
Be part of time. But it would be open anyway, you know, somebody went to it, so.
I'm just concerned if, if we didn't have someone working the security. If the handicap, you know, the person would have a difficult time opening the door if no one's up there. What do you think?
They could have somebody working the security.
Well, we've talked to.
What if that person goes to bathroom?
Uh, yeah, you're right. There needs to be an alternate, yeah, there needs to be an alternate one to get in. So where are we at as far as getting money in budget? Are we getting that accomplished, you think?
You mean for the officer?
I know you are working on it.
Well, we talked to, uh, John, actually, and it comes out of John's phone, we can't, we can't levy for it or, right, John?
If you're gonna do a new levy, you're, you're still gonna have, gonna have to put it on the ballot. We'll have to do some research on it because you can't just come up and create a new levy because we're a P T L county.
But you, I mean, you don't have to appropriate it within the budget some way?
Well, you could, you could appropriate it through courthouse maintenance. I mean, there's several different ways you can appropriate it. You could appropriate it through the sheriff's department.
That's something that, you know, we're finalized this week, so we're trying to, Jeff's out of town today, but on Friday, maybe we can.
But I mean, it's hard to appropriate something when after payroll today, our balance is gonna be two thousand dollars.
Well, I understand that. I understand. I understand.
Uh, Becky, I, we had talked about having two officers, uh, in case one gets sick, you know. But, you know, I'm thinking about it at home, if we just had one and maybe the sheriff, if this guy was sick or had to go to funeral or something, if the, a deputy couldn't do it for a day.
Correct.
You know, I don't know why he couldn't check somebody, at least to, make a mind for something if the guy was sick.
Yeah, um, the only issue you're gonna run into there though is if it's a full-time employee where you got, you know, your benefits and, and all of that. I mean, I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
Have you checked in with one of these like burns or something like that to see what they? Like burn security, just see what, how much it would cost to?
To handle like this.
I think that we, I mean, I thought that we had talked about that and we agreed we wanted somebody with previous law enforcement experience so that they would have the ability to have a weapon on the scene and, and be like a true security person. I don't know what those, I don't know what they're qualified to be.
I don't know if they, they carry weapons, I don't know.
They might be, right.
I can pack heat.
Oh, boy. Well, John, you're hired.
Yeah. Wonder if we can just kinda open up this side of your office and we just have a security thing.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, uh, that, and say your carrier, would that be classified, I mean, for that?
No, 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 it wouldn't, no, no, you can, uh, if you're gonna have a MARS, you're probably gonna have to get it cleared through the sheriff's department, I would think.
I will, I don't know if we discussed this last time or not. I had talked to, um, a lady down at Southern Five, um, Shawnee College about help, you know, possibility of getting a grant of some sort to pay. She evidently works closely with Ted, with that type of thing and she searched, you know, did a, a really good diligent search and couldn't find anything as far as a grant for the salary portion of that. Um, I spoke with Judge Jackson, he said his whatever account he, that we thought we might be able to tap into, it's, the money's not there either. So I'm not sure where else to look. I really, I don't know.
Um, I, I, I'm not sure there is a grant.
Place sales? I don't think there is.
I mean, I think we'll just have to pay for it or save it some way.
Yeah, this, from what I understand from speaking with Ted, this, uh, person is very knowledgeable about that type of thing and she, he said if she couldn't find it, that it probably didn't exist, so.
You don't know who that thing?
Yes, I didn't, I couldn't think of her name, but that's, that's who it is.
There's grants out there for stuff we don't need.
I know. Oh, I could find all kinds of stuff for other things, but not specifically for our purpose. Okay.
Have we ever talked to Larry to see if there's grace, any kind of fee that we can attach to a ticket or, or?
They do have.
We do have a courtroom security fund, but I don't know if that deploys just to the courtroom or?
And I could be completely wrong about that, but I think that is the money that's collected that goes to Judge Jackson that in turn goes back to the general fund for the bailiff salary and I don't hope that can be increased.
There's the county court system, which is separate from the courtroom security fund.
Right. I don't know if that can be increased. I don't know if he's maxed out on that. I don't know, you know, how that works. Um.
They increased it a few years ago and it, and it did help. I mean, it's been, time gets away from you, but they did increase it to where it actually pays for the cost of the bailiff now.
Right.
It used to, you know, you were, you know, paid for less than half.
I wonder, I wonder if, uh, like if us, all three of us and Ted and Patrick and Mary Grace sat down together, if we can come up with some type of, you know, fees or something that we feel like is appropriate to help pay for that, offset it.
Uh, John, we'll, I'll see, we'll see Monday Russell for next, in two weeks. We, we'll, we'll see what they do then, then, see if they've got a way to, Dan Plankowski. We're on the board with the commission down there. We'll see what they're doing.
Yeah, find out where their money comes from, if it's attached to their traffic fines somehow, because they have a huge volume of traffic.
That's how, that's how they support the campaign.
Yeah, it's unreal.
Traffic stop too many times.
Where do they call them over at?
Fifty seven.
Okay.
I forgot how many, about like tens of thousands they write a year.
Probably more than, well, they got several people out there, aren't they?
And they write for just a few miles over. I mean, they don't.
But you know, they're writing them.
Yeah, you pop across that I fifty seven bridge from Alex and through the last, you better be.
You better slow down.
They stop in I here, they're eighty and, and they never rest. I mean, one car can stop. I understand as soon as it gets stopped, boy, that's off again.
Yeah. Okay, so, do we wanna?
We will, um, try to make a appointment with Larry and Ted and Patrick and us. Just look at Patrick's schedule and then we'll try to coordinate with the other two guys.
Okay.
I don't, what day is Larry Grace alive this year then?
Probably on a Friday.
On a Friday?
Wednesday or Friday.
Okay. Which, that should be probably when Patrick's available too.
Daryl Bunny, you're gonna keep things hopping around here.
In Thursday.
I can always tell what kind of day you're gonna have by how many, no, you need to call our circuit clerk. And then I find, I finally figured out why we get so many calls, because if you Google up circuit clerk.
Get your number?
It's my number. And I don't know who put that in.
You need to change that.
I don't know how to do that.
Call Google. I don't know.
Can you Google Google?
You been wrecking on that bicycle anymore?
No, I had my first ride. I went to go Sunday. I managed to stay on two wheels and.
Wait, you crashed?
I crashed last September, broke my.
And my dog didn't even call, said Brenda's dog didn't even call, said.
No, not this time.
Slipped on some leaves?
Well, Jackson, it was a little more than that.
You got a hybrid bike or mountain bike?
Hybrid.
Hybrid. I like the hi- they look pretty cool. A lot more comfortable.
Yeah, a lot more comfortable.
Did you get over bike world?
Yep, not cheap, but you know, you get what you pay for.
That's right.
Okay, well, I guess I will wait to hear from you or check back up the end of month.
Uh, Jeb Mel. Check the same here, man.
That's the one we want you to look at.
Office depot, late fee, man.
The minimum payment was like sixty six dollars a month. Since they didn't make it, they're doing this fifty six dollars in late fees and interest. And I have to balance my whole bills on like eight hundred dollars. That's one of those, it's got like thirty percent interest.
Okay. Still have the Rebecca, the guy about on the roof here.
What's going over there, man? Pretty full. Always, yeah. Well, there's two, there's two of these that look exactly like, we took one out of the, or, my line item, we took one out of John's because one goes to the jail, one comes to the deputies. So if you see two identical bills, but they got a different line item.
Yes, it was just half the balance. Any issues with vehicles or any problems?
Uh, Sandy said the total now for January and February, what we've charged for housing is twenty six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. That's what we made first two months. Twenty four hundred dollars in bond fees, first two months of the year. Order averaged about fifteen a day.
Ted, there's, there's some lips like it's on here, did you know? Same, okay, same amount, same date and everything.
Yeah, one's coming out of jail budget, one's coming out of deputies budget.
Same amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jail inspectors coming Thursday, I think, for yearly audits. John, do you know it? Square away, like, should I have any problems? A little leak in the jail roof last week, one trustee's fixed that for us.
Had, um, a, uh, resident call and, uh, complained there at Massac Creek Road. Is it the role like, uh, Kelly Glass and live off of them? Two things, uh, was his issue. One, he lives, uh, has, uh, the interstate, oh, we're going under the interstate. Come up that hill there, uh, he said in the mornings when kids are going to school and stuff and then people driving to work. He said they're coming down that hill like fifty, sixty miles an hour or faster. And he said there was a car a while back that rolled over. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Yes, my bad, that curve right there.
Yeah. He said they're on, you know, flat and then they come down that hill and they curve and they just, momentum just gets going.
But they're in front of good story.
Yeah, that's actually who called me.
Is that what he wanted?
Well, he was upset.
I mean, he came in.
Not today, he had to reschedule, he said for a few weeks. But, uh, he said that, that in the mornings, like when people's going to work at eight o'clock or something, traffic's just flying through their kids. Appreciate if we can have someone to kinda watch it.
See, now that poses a problem for us. In the past, we've had people complain about, you know, kids speeding to schools. We go to those locations to sit up and watch them. But now that we're actually at the schools, watching the kids get off. We can't be in both places at the same time.
I understand that.
And the parents and the teachers really appreciate us speeding into schools now.
I know, I know, I know. When he was telling me that, I was thinking the same thing. And it poses a problem schools out too, because you're in the same situation, you know? So I don't know. I just wanna make sure he, he's concerned about it. And the other issue, he sent him and his wife, uh, they went up and down that road and picked up tremendous amount of garbage. Like, uh, just cups and, you know, just trash in the ditches. And wish that we would, uh, put more teeth in a fine with people littering. He says it seems like down that road is horrible. And, uh, you know, make, I don't say examples, but, uh.
What is an apple, young?
I don't know what is a fine for littering, is it?
It may be five.
And, uh, he says just, which I noticed, you know, at Dosster Park Road that I come down when I get off work. Down around, I mean, it's, ditches are full, so, you know, uh, and he has to somewhere down, in the future, maybe in the spring or the summer at the county, could do something where, which I think is a good idea, like if you have a weekend where, to try to promote it and we all get out there and pick the trash up and try to clean up the community some.
Is it trash bags or just cups and stuff like that?
Just cups and stuff, but he told me.
Fast, but you?
Yeah, just, he said, he said I picked up over two hundred, uh, Sonic cups, he said. He said just, he said whoever the person is, is drinking Sonic cups and smoking Marlboro hicks. He said I picked up tons of Marlboro hick packages and Sonic cups.
Really like that, boy?
Yeah, he said just constant. But, uh, he said they went up and down that road there about a mile each way. And they had six large trash bags full of just, uh, in the ditches. Now, he told me, uh, then he talked to Larry, that some of the areas down through there where there's like drains going into the creek beds, there's some, some, some furniture and he said even dead dogs and stuff, dead deer are down in there, kinda blocking some of that.
Well, that's the easiest, I mean, if they're actually throwing trash bags, that's easier for us because we can always find letters and correspondence with an address on the same road and that way. Just catching somebody littering is, is, it's harder to do.
Yeah, you know. It is, but.
That would be another good thing, you know, for Patrick to look at as far as the trash and inmates picking it up.
And I, and I discussed that with, uh, Mr. Story when he called. I said, you know, we're looking into that. He said he thinks that'd be a great idea. But he said, you know, also we need to figure out a way to prevent it. How do I, you know, he said if we can just make it more severe when people get caught. Stuff, but, uh, I thought he told me.
Same thing in my yard and road.
Yeah, well, it's like, I mean, I live in a subdivision and I clean up my ditches all the time. I mean, there's only a certain amount of people at door. You know, my mom, or she lives on Marion Road, we're always out there cleaning those ditches out. But, uh, maybe this spring we can, or summer we can.
Yeah, we did, we did that one time and Glassville got involved in it and.
Yeah.
I believe he went down and picked all the bags up, I think.
Well, I was one, you know, there's one thing about our landfill or, you know, where we take our trash, they're not open on Saturdays.
No.
Their irs are tough for a working man. Their irs, they could close at three thirty. I mean, they're open like, they're open like the, the irs that the trash people work, you know, the bulldogs. They're open like seven thirty to three thirty. Cause I know I've tried to take stuff out there before and they're closed. They're closed on the weekends, on Saturday. It used to be open half a day on Saturday and they don't even do that no more. You know, a person works Monday through Friday, I mean, it's kinda tough to.
Yeah.
Take your trash. But they said they just weren't busy enough on Saturdays, is what I was told. I understand the point, Ted, it's kinda hard to be at both places at the same time. But they, you know, they just said that it seems like traffic's really picking up and speeding out through there. He asked me and I said, I, I believe it's fifty or fifty five. He said, but if there's no signs posted, what is the speed limit? Fifty five.
See what we can, I said, get somebody to just check it, get the speed check for once.
How about the guy who worked in the interstate, did he just sit out there for a little bit in the morning, just a few minutes?
I mean, I've got him on school too for that.
Oh, I do, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll put somebody out there.
I didn't know that. You know, I know you don't like to give locals tickets at some time, but you gotta.
Well, I mean, that right there. Save somebody's life, because it's more likely it's gonna be a kid going to school.
Yeah. And I think he told me, he did two or three that's ran the ditch and I thought he said one person kinda turned over inside. You know, coming down through there. So. Appreciate it. I'm sure there's areas all over the county like that, just out there. You know, people getting hurried for school. See, another one that always seems like to me, I take my kids out to the Indian Pirate Church Road in the morning. Kids, I mean, people flying down that road. That's a bumpy old road too. Dangerous road. How was your tabletop exercise last week?
Real good.
Was it a good learning experience?
Yeah, the only, if, nobody from the fire department showed up, if they had, it would work out a lot better because a lot of it had to do with the fire service, but, uh.
Wonder why?
I don't know if they just couldn't make it or.
You mean county or city, nobody showed up?
I think the only two they provided was the Massac County Fire Department and Brookport Fire Department, because it had to do with the dam outside of Brookport. Coast Guard, River Industry. It was really, it's a learning experience, because I thought I knew a lot about the Brookport Dam and there's a lot I didn't know.
Is that right?
How it operated. How it operated.
So, they're saying that the dam just gave away, what, this, what this exercise was about?
Uh, this was like a barge that, that got away from them and ran through the wickets and knocked some of them down.
Okay.
How fast the pool would drop down, and once it drops down, then there's no river traffic either way, it just shuts down completely. It was transmontained and has the fuel. They said after that pool drops and the barge stops, I mean, that's where all the gas link comes from. Well, it's just a matter of days, tracks will stop, because there's nobody can exit in there.
Is that right?
Other than truck it in.
Wow.
So, how, how much is dependent upon that river?
That's interesting.
As old as that dam is, I mean, of course, wickets, they may not be able to find replacement parts.
Uh, Ted, how big of a hole was that talking about, or, not, a barge knocked them?
Just five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet would drain it all away, no.
Yeah, always. By the way, I'm just saying, it's just a couple of days.
So, it's like the Sheriff's Department over here, what, what kind of response would you be getting, what would?
Well, the, the situation that they had, there was an anhydrous ammonia barge that went through it, so we were more or less, you know, looking at containing any damage to the dam, and, and you maybe have to evacuate the people, what we.
Right, whatever way the wind is going, or?
And that's where the fire department would come in, is they had the, the equipment to do what's called the plume modeling.
Right.
Show which way the winds were on, how big the plume would be.
You know, Ted, I was working up first next one. We got there one morning, a, a rock barge, that's just like you were talking about, got away and lodged sideways in the, where that water goes, the way the wickets serve. And then guy got out there on top, on the, well, you know, turned upside down, was walking on that barge, trying to figure out what to do about it. And that night, that barge broke in too, and then everything, it went on through the dam and everything. That, that water's powerful, yeah.
But the dam employees were standing on top of it?
Well, not one of them broke, but, but the day, the day it broke, they stand there trying to figure out, you know, what to do, they walked right out there on it, it was lodged in there. Nobody thought about what was fixing to happen, and then, that night it broke in too in both halves, went from there.
I know, we, back years ago, when my dad and I used to go to Brookport, they should use a, a one pound lead sink to hold you on the bottom. That line would just go out, it'd just go everywhere, that's how strong that current was in the bottom of that dam.
Wow. I would want to get close to it.
There's people fish right of their own, I mean, they'll tie off right there at them wickets.
That's crazy.
On the bottom side.
Well, they, I guess they think there's bigger fish right there.
There are, yeah. They're up their feet and on those shad.
Give it water, fill them boats up, and they've had it.
You got any, uh, we, I think you were, it was in here earlier, on courthouse security, and I told her it'd be nice if, uh, the commissioners and, uh, you and Mary Grace and Patrick could get together, kind of look at any options that we thought, kind of fees or anything we could add to help pay for courthouse security, uh, as a labor issue.
Yeah.
I think, uh, she said Fridays is usually a good day for Patrick and Larry, because the courtside is busy, so maybe you're seeing we can meet.
Okay.
Talk about it. Gerald's almost got that project done out front.
I suppose, and ask how close are we to it?
We're working on the doors, I think, be ready.
So.
I'm in the ring, just having a good one, so.
We're just hoping we get something designated to help pay for the labor then.
Got to be some, something.
She says, uh, you know, they checked with, uh, Southern Five, there's just no, she talked to Lisa Thurston, there's just nothing out there for grants or anything.
I don't know how the other counties, how they does it, make that fund to pay for that, where they get it out of.
John said maybe he got the courthouse maintenance or something, but I don't know. And she says she checked with, uh, Judge Jackson, and that fund that he has, he don't feel like it's strong enough to help pay for anything.
No, John said, I thought maybe we could levy for that, but he said, dude, that's a bit unvalid, so it's just a general fund item. Uh, I'm gonna talk to Monty Russell, uh, Commissioner down at Clansky, do you know Monty? Well, yeah, I'll see what they're, they, they, uh, they put up a ramp and all, all a couple of years ago, I'll see what they're doing. General, well, Becky said they get all the money out on the interstate, and that may be how they're doing.
I don't know, they find everything down there, I'm interested.
Yeah.
I think she said they wrote, like, ten thousand tickets.
Yeah.
They probably, no, I thought she said they probably wrote a point more than that.
I was like, my goodness.
Yeah.
Also, uh, Mary Glasgow, uh, had a, a, what's it, a company out of Wingo, I forget the name of it, it worked on our honeywell system out there.
Garland.
Garland, and he called the, uh, the gas company here in town and asked them, and they said, well, this, this, uh, guy does it for the hospital, so, but he replaced a controller, honeywell controller, it said, I think the price and everything was nine hundred dollars. So, I told him, maybe talk to Marcia, give their number, you know, maybe we can give them a try sometime, if they have an issue with the boiler.
Well, we're looking to see what we got.
Yeah, it's, uh, Garland was the name of the company out of Wingo. And that's who, uh, works on the hospital stuff.
Ted Ballard, Ken?
I'm not for sure, we're, the Wingo's a valley.
It might be or Marshall, I don't know. I've been to Wingo, I'll go to Mayfield, turn right and go back in there.
Yeah. Are they greatest gallery or?
Yeah, I bet.
Mike was a good job, and anytime he needs a party, he's gonna grab these St. Louis to get it.
Well, I don't know if you looked at that bill that we had come through.
Twelve, twelve two hundred?
Yeah, twelve hundred dollars, it was labor, you know, like the park was like six hundred bucks. You know, so, I think, you know, maybe we give this guy a chance. They're working on a hospital, or, and that's who, uh, they called a local guy, it's here in the gas company, and they recommended him. Said he does a good job, maybe we'll try that. Anything else? Sometime when the, when you get time, then we can plan that trip, then I'll look at that facility interview mention one time. Again, what was, what was that located?
Mercer Canyon.
Mercer Canyon, it was like a, a larger facility over there. The tensions there.
Yeah, exactly. It's the county right below Rock Island. Five hours up the Mullein.
Uh, what do you think about building on?
Well, no, we just.
See how they did that?
Yeah, that's right, that'd be a possibility, but, I mean, it's an income-producing thing for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's basically the same size we are, it's fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Must get windy, man.
It's getting colder, but then warmer later tomorrow.
This week is really nice.
I was supposed to go to Rock Island last Thursday to get two generators, uh, for the city, and, and twenty-foot containers. With this, Charlie Rich, he said they, um, got the numbers wrong, give them somebody else. I hadn't heard, well, they called yesterday, wanting to go to Nashville to get a portlet for, I think, Celine Canyon or something. Said they're calling back today or tomorrow.
I went to St. Louis on Friday, and I was gonna tell you, we was heading to St. Louis, but coming on the other direction. I passed a, like, a bunch of semis hauling different military stuff on it.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I bet I seen ten or twelve different, I mean, spaced out, just throughout the day.
I guess there was a lot of them.
I mean, a lot of it just coming into the.
And all this stuff's coming out of Scotters twice, it's what they're done today.
Is it, but there was a bunch of stuff, you know, just Humvees and car, or old cars and trucks that were hanging in camp. I don't know, generators, bubble homewood things, all kinds of stuff. Up and down the interstate. State troopers were everywhere pulling people over.
Was there up there?
Yeah, they always had to cut out a lane.
Uh, Ted, who's that, state, what's the name of that there on Tenth Street, by the?
St. Albie.
St. Albie. Both that house were remodeled.
What shifts he worked, does he work this different shift?
Mainly dates, but I think he's probably got some odd shifts in there too, but he's, uh, he's got a, he's a sergeant now, so he's got a squad that works under him.
Did he D O P? Well, he never wanted to leave that during that subdivision.
Mm-hmm, maybe he locked that door.
Oh, he did. Now, I saw a Jeep there with that name on it, but I didn't know, I didn't like that name very much.
Well, that doesn't work too hard today.